We're gonna start the meeting off tonight with two public hearings. First public hearing is amendment to section 405-255, accessory buildings and structures. Jack, or you want to address that?
Could he be mayor on board? First I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, and my P&amp;Z report. First one is a proposed amendment to section 405.255, accessory buildings and structures, ADM 61, and their request is to delete the sentence in 405.255-1C. Delete the sentence that states, except in ag, no accessory buildings, our structures shall be larger in total area than forty percent of the total building area of the principal structure on the lot. And then the P&amp;Z commission also recommended adding to section 405.050 definitions and interpretation, a definition for building area, and that definition would read, the total exterior dimension of the building at the ground level. Due to public hearing notice requirements, the proposed amendment to the definitions will have to be presented in January. This motion was approved. For approval passed seven to zero with three absent at the November 7, 2013 P&amp;Z Commission meeting.
Thank you, Jack. You might hang around here, because we're gonna do the other thing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the accessory building structures? Come forward at this time and give us your name.
I was in favor of this due to the fact that many of us out there have motor homes and stuff like that that we can't keep inside. They're an eyesore. We're just getting really tired of looking at everybody else's stuff. People's garages are really getting overwhelmed with the stuff. You know, these cookie cutter homes are real small anymore. Garages are twenty by twenty. I own two vehicles that are twenty-four feet long, so I can't park either one inside. And that was one of the reasons why we're trying to have this amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on addition structure? At this time, I'll close that public hearing, and we'll open up public hearing amendment to appendix A zoning grid, ADM 62.
Once again, I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, a public hearing notice, and my P&amp;Z report. This is a proposed amendment to appendix A, the zoning grid, ADM 62, and it's a recommendation to change number three, commercial, section four, bakery, commercial or wholesale bakery with limited walk-in retail trade, number five, bakery, retail trade, and number sixteen, food service, walk-in, walk-up, walk-up restaurants, walk-in restaurants with drive-through and our drive-in, all to be changed to a conditional use. This motion for approval passed seven to zero with three absent at the November 7, 2013 P&amp;Z Commission meeting.
Thank you, Jack. Is there anyone from the public that would want to address the amendment to appendix A zoning grid? If so, come forward at this time. Not hearing from anyone, I'll close the public hearings, and we'll open the Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order for the November 19, 2013, 7:00 PM. Chief, would you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance if everyone would stand and face the flag?
High court ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, the regular board meeting minutes of November 5, 2013.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as given.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November 5, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Cassely is absent. Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Five to zero with one absent. Item 3B, executive session minutes from November 5, 2013.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from November 5, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the executive session minutes from November 5, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Item four, hearing for the public. This is the part of our meeting where we invite the public to come forward and address the board. We ask that you come to the podium, give us your name, keep the remarks five minutes or less. So if anybody would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Nobody wants to address the board, so we'll give the board the, extend the same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If any of the Aldermen would like to address the public, would you do so at this time?
I would just like to mention, this past weekend, actually the weekend prior, I had the opportunity with my daughters through the Girl Scouts to attend a, an event, for lack of a better term, at the Armory, a group called Patriot Packages. The Girl Scouts got involved by donating Halloween candy, and that was part of these care packages that Patriot Packages puts together and ships to troops overseas currently serving. I'd certainly read plenty of articles and seen about this work. I'd never witnessed or participated in it, and it was enjoyable. It was nice to see. There were probably forty, forty-five volunteers there that morning, putting these packages together and doing good work. Also like to mention that the weekend of December 6, is the Hometown Christmas, which will be the tree lighting, there's a chili cook-off, and other parade. I guess we're gonna have some reindeer maybe this year again. Another good event held annually in the city of Warrenton. And I believe we're in here later that maybe we're gonna have a Little League basketball league hopefully starting this winter. And I bring all of that up because, you know, usually we're sitting here and talking about issues, and we sometimes have divergent opinions on how things should be, but there are a lot of good things going on in our community, and a lot of events that people can get involved in, whether it's volunteering to coach a youth team, whether it's entering in the chili cook-off, volunteering for Patriot Packages. There are a lot of good opportunities to be involved in the community, and once you determine that you do, and you can find the time to do it, it's very fulfilling.
Alderman Flake?
Well, I'd just like to say Veterans Day, they had a ceremony out at the Armory out there, which was very well attended, had a full house, and there were several hundred schoolchildren there, and I think it was a good experience for them, because they learned a little something about what Veterans Day is, and how the military, what the military is. It was well attended and a real good celebration.
We did all that. Alderman Dyer? My remarks will be very brief. Maybe Melody or Brad might help me on the date. Is this Friday the day the Aldermen supposed to work on the float?
Correct.
At two o'clock at the maintenance building? So any Aldermen that are available from two on that wanna lend a hand, I'm sure they would appreciate your help. The only other thing I was wanting to comment on, the citizens of Warrenton got a letter from the Public Works Department this week. Not sure who was responsible for the letter. Want to thank them for sending that letter out. It was very informative. It helps our residents understand the sewer backup problems, who is responsible, and at what time they're responsible, and what time the city's responsible. Also talked about the insurance rider that they probably need to put on their home for backup of sewer water. So I thought that was an extremely well-written letter, very productive, and had some comments from people about it. I don't know if Guy's gonna take that credit or who.
Guy's gonna take that credit.
Thanks to whoever did it, that was well received. So that's all I have. I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is a request to close Thurman Street from Main to Oak Street from 5 to 7, and Main Street from Troy to Morgan from 5:30 to 7, for the Warrenton Hometown Christmas Parade on December 6. And Janet Todd was the requister from the Downtown Association. I don't think Janet's here.
No, actually Jason was, but he's got finals tonight, so he was gonna ask if Janet could possibly fill in for him.
Okay.
So I don't know that Janet could actually make it.
Okay. So neither one of them's here?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I mean, is there any questions or discussions for the board?
I think it's the same as last year.
Same as last year? So we basically just need to entertain a motion to either...
I make a motion to grant the closure of the two streets.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the request to close Thurman Street from Main Street to Oak Street from 5 to 7, and Main Street from Troy to Morgan from 5:30 to 7, for the Hometown Christmas Parade on December 6. Any further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Item number eight, this was a tabled item from last meeting, sign regulation discussion regarding signs in the right-of-way. I might mention to the board, I have had not a lot of calls, but a few calls, and a few people have commented to me on it, and I think most of the comments was from the article Chris did in the Warren County Record last week, and their comment was all the same. They said, "It appears to us, the general public, that the city of Warrenton's not interested in developers coming to the community." And I explained to them, nothing could be farther from the truth. We are interested, but that's the perception that's out there. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion. I know Alderman Cornell, you're gonna have something to say?
Always.
Always. You started off.
Okay. Well, and the first thing, Mr. Cannon's in attendance tonight, probably the first thing I want to say is, in preparation for this meeting, I had an opportunity to go back and watch the last meeting. I don't know how you walked away from that meeting that night, what your feelings were. I will tell you that having watched that, I would've felt like, I would've walked away feeling like I just got cross-examined. When I came onto this board, one of my concerns was that people should feel free to come and express their desires and not be cross-examined. My comments were, I came across harsher than my feelings were on the subject, and I hope that you didn't walk away with that feeling. If you did, I apologize for the tone of my voice.
No. My name's Marney Cannon. I didn't feel that way at all.
Very good.
Leaving the meeting, I felt that it was left with you all having an open mind to it, and that I felt that if there was a way to figure it out, then it would be figured out. Obviously, I understand that you have issues.
Right.
And concerns, but it kind of boils down to the bottom line, as we need it, a lot of other cities allow it, and it's just a very important issue to us. So I would like to see if we can make it work here. If we can, that's great. If not, then obviously we've still got building sites that we need to do something with. It makes our job a little more difficult, and our results probably a little less favorable.
Right.
And, but, not at all. I felt very good about the meeting.
Good.
And as I have pretty much from all other meetings I've come here, most city meetings, you find people are open to the idea, but, you know, it has to make sense. And I know you're making a decision for a lot of people, and it's not just your personal opinion sometimes, but, you know, you all are put in position to make those decisions, and they're not always popular or easy decisions. But from our side of it, I think we've presented our case, and it's kind of in your all's lap to kind of figure out if we can proceed on with it. And I hope you've had time to maybe talk to some of the other cities that are doing it, and see how they handle it, because it is something that's done quite regularly and has been going on for quite some time.
Okay.
So.
Well, I have had some time to think. I've had some discussions with Ms. Thorne. I still keep coming back to a feeling that in order to accommodate this, and I don't sell houses, I don't build houses, so I don't know what's required. I will trust your judgment, and the young lady from the HBA, that these are important. I come back to, I have difficulty with making a decision to not enforce a rule or a regulation in order for that to occur. And I made some notes, and part of it is, I've seen your subdivision signs, the temporary ones for other subdivisions, whether it's in Lincoln County or St. Charles County, and they certainly are of good appearance. I don't have a concern about that. I don't have a concern, or I don't believe that it's genuine to think that MoDOT is going to come Monday morning or Tuesday morning, come clear out everything that is remaining. I think that's kind of where we got to, where we're enforcing these regulations. And as the representative from the HBA said, MoDOT has bigger things to take care of. I've driven around to some of the other communities that were cited, and there are signs still remaining throughout the work week in the state right-of-way. I think that MoDOT may respond to complaints. I don't know, but I don't think that it's genuine to believe that come Tuesday morning, they're gonna come through and clear out different areas. I think that Michelle checked with some other cities, and some of them do allow, some of them don't. I don't know that there are any that specifically say, shy of St. Peter's possibly, that we allow them to do whatever. We don't, we turn our head to these violations. I also come back to the property rights issue, and when I asked about, would it be possible to contact the properties along the roadways and get permission, you said that normally you meet with about ninety percent, I think you said, people that say no. And I, that brings me back to, if we decide to not enforce these rules or regulations, are we allowing an end run on those property rights? They don't have a right to the state right-of-way. Those property owners don't. But we are allowing signs to be put in that right-of-way that the property owners certainly wouldn't have given permission. They don't want those signs in front of their property. The issue where we redid our sign regulations, the court opinion where you can't regulate based on content is part of this. I think that when you can't regulate based upon content, it would seem that the only way for the, to enforce the community standard for content is through property owners' permission to put signs up. And again, that is the only way. If we say the only signs that can go up are outside of the right-of-ways, that allows the property owner to regulate what is in front of their property. And one of the, one of the things that came to mind was political signs. If next time around Alderman Flake is running for office and wants to go stick his sign in front of the mayor's house, the mayor's property butts Highway 47, I don't believe that the mayor could stop Mr. Flake from putting a sign in his front yard, and likewise, discussing with the city attorney. I think that if the mayor went and pulled that sign out, I think the mayor could be facing some kind of action for removing that sign. So I think there are just a whole lot of unintended consequences. City Hall butts up to a state roadway. We could have people posting signs in the state right-of-way in front of City Hall with no ability to regulate that. And I don't think that we mean political signs, or, one of the, one of the issues the police department had recently is leaflets being distributed in the community for the KKK. Without judging that organization specifically, if I butted up to a state highway, I would not want a KKK sign in the right-of-way in front of my property. And that's when it comes back to, permission by the property owners is the only way for the community to control the content of the signs. So, that was a bunch of words. So, that's it for now.
What about Alderman Clark? You have any feelings on this?
I feel that we should try to find some way of doing it, maybe even on a trial basis, where we grant them like a six-month period trial and see how it goes. There is some issues that I have too with the landowners that are adjacent to where the signs are. We have some Realtors write on the 47-40 interchange that I'm sure they wouldn't want signs right in front of their places. I'm just giving that out because it's a possibility, and that's what we have to look at. We run into those types, I don't want to call them conflicts, but there's a little bit of courtesy that goes along with this. Obviously, when competing builders lay out signs, obviously, the competing builder likes to give them in front of your place, but they kind of do it in a professional-type manner. I mean, if you've got your signs, they don't really typically blatantly go right in front. They may go up the road a little ways, or down the road, or they try to capture your traffic too, but at the same token, it's really in marketing of this stuff, if you're the only guy in town, it's much more difficult to get traffic than if there's three or four of you. Competition is not really that bad.
Right.
Because if everybody spends money, everybody does signs, everybody does the activity to try to get people to come to a location, you're gonna spawn from each other's traffic, and we welcome that. And the more money that the other guy spends, we benefit from it. So it's not that we're gonna, you know, do that.
Right.
But we do run into occasion of that. I'm not to say that we haven't laid out some signs, and they've been taken. And if they take them once or twice, and I know that that individual's probably not real happy with it, every time they take them, it's ten dollars for me.
Right.
So I'm not gonna lay too many of them out like that. And I've had them taken out in state highway. They'll walk out in the state highway to get them. And obviously, if they're that intense about it, then I'll go someplace else, because I don't want to lose the signs. You know, we'll lay out thirty or forty of these in the Troy area on the weekend. So we've got a fair amount of investment. It takes a fair amount of time. We do it as a part of our work week. You know, we'll lay them out either Friday, late Friday afternoon, early Saturday morning, pick them up late Sunday night, or Monday morning early. You kind of do it when the traffic's as light as you can, or when the weather permits, or, you know, if you take the weekend off or something, you gotta do it Monday morning early. So it's part of our, it's a business, and it's part of our business. So I would feel awful guilty if they were there much later than eight o'clock on Monday morning. I'd feel like we, you know, when they come here to ask permission to do something, I feel a sense of obligation to you all as not to bend those rules. So.
And my concern wouldn't necessarily be with you.
I understand.
Again, it's the unintended consequence.
But if you go to the fee base, that will eliminate some of the stuff that maybe you don't want. You know, we're trying to provide a few outlets to kind of regulate a little bit.
Right.
I think it's, you know, it's kind of a bad opportunity maybe to look at it that way, but it is an opportunity for, to find if they're not doing it properly. If they have their telephone number on, it's easier to find out where they're going.
I think that, though, the problem there would be, I wouldn't be necessarily comfortable with charging a permit to allow signs to be put into property that the city doesn't own or maintain. And likewise, I don't know that we could find somebody. It seems to me that we're either gonna allow it, or we're not. We're gonna either enforce it seven days a week, or we're not gonna enforce it at all. And to, I don't know that you could necessarily find somebody for, again, I think it's one or the other. It's kind of a free-for-all, or it's regulated, would be kind of where I'm...
I guess we're asking for it in limited quantity. You made the comment about trying it. I'm game for trying it for six months or a year. You know, if you get nothing but bad press out of it, then shut it down. You know, it gives us an opportunity also to try it a little bit. I haven't been able to try it here in Warrenton, so I don't know what the benefit will be. And it may be that it's not as much benefit as elsewhere. I doubt it, but, you know, I'm game for that.
I think just trying for six months or whatever, sort of time like that, of not enforcing MoDOT's rules, I don't see where we have a major problem with that.
I think the issue is that we don't have the authority to give you permission to put signs in MoDOT's right-of-way.
Maybe it needs to be looked at a different way. You all have taken on the responsibility of policing MoDOT's right-of-way. Is that something you want to do?
Well, I think that's our dilemma tonight. We have an agreement with MoDOT, allowing us to police their right-of-way, to take signs out at our discretion. So as Alderman Clark said, I think the dilemma might be, do we want to put a moratorium on this for a while and try it for six months or a year? But we have to, the board has to make a decision, not which best for Cannon Builders, but which best for the city of Warrenton.
I fully understand.
And that's a tough decision to please everybody sometimes.
I understand that.
Okay. Alderman Ock, do you have a comment on this?
Couple ways.
Yeah, well, I'll try to keep it short. Although, do I get Alderman Cassely's time? So she can yield my time to me, like in doing the seven. All right. I guess, you know, in the 22 years I've been at the board, it's always baffled me about how much time we spend talking about temporary signs, and getting upset because somebody posted a garage sale sign on a telephone pole, which isn't even ours, or puts a little notice of a yard sale sign on a corner of interchange so people can see it. You know, it's not something that, my personal preference is such that we should be heavily enforcing. I don't know why the city ever took on the responsibility of doing the state of Missouri's job. State of Missouri should do their job. You know, to me, there's three properties. There's properties that the city owns, which we have an agreement, you worked out with the lawyer on the city-owned property, and personal property. I'm sorry, if my property was butted to the state highway, and somebody put a sign on my property, I would pull it out. And they can try to sue me for putting an illegal sign in the state highway. That's, you know, that's just what I do. I've done it before. During certain times of the year, you have elections at the Methodist Church, somebody puts a sign in the state highway in front of the church. I pull it out, because it's not reflective of the church's view. So they have no right to do that. Now, is somebody gonna come along and beat me up? I don't know, never have. So I think sometimes we try to do things based on worst-case scenarios, and on things that could've happened, you know, and I just personally have no problem supporting John's idea of a moratorium. Because, I mean, this past weekend, you know, I went, you go through town, and there was... You go through town and there was illegal signs posted by somebody. It was a garage sale sign one time. Couple of weekends ago, there was a Mason's that pointed out a sign up for their breakfast. Somebody else had a sign up for something. I don't have any issue with it. If I'm coming through town and I see a sign for something, I may want to go to it. I don't know. You know, so I just... To me, I think we should just not enforce it for a while and just see what happens. If it gets... If it becomes really ugly, then we address it. But I don't see it becoming really ugly. And the other thing I noticed going through town and through St. Louis County and a lot of towns, if the town has property to be developed, you see signs like that in the community. But if you can drive through U-City, you don't ever see that because there's no lots that aren't developed. There's no lots that are on GPS maps because it's a fully-developed community. And so, you're working in a nonfully-developed community, so I can see a role for it. So I would support John if he made a motion that we just have a moratorium. I don't think we're having any obligation to the state to do the state's bidding myself.
Alderman Flake?
What says here, according to some of these other cities, it says if someone has a permit for MoDOT, then signs are allowed in MoDOT's right-of-way. Otherwise, no signs are allowed in any right-of-way, MoDOT or city. Have you ever applied for a permit for putting signs on the state right-of-way?
I don't know that MoDOT permits signs.
Right here is what... Right in front of us is what it says. It's three different cities have the same regulation.
No, I've never requested a permit.
But it sounds like they have an ordinance that doesn't apply to anything. I mean, they say, "Well, I can write an ordinance on something, activity that doesn't exist." Or "MoDOT doesn't permit signs" or "doesn't have a process for getting a permit." What does the ordinance really mean? It's kind of like if we write an ordinance for MoDOT property, we don't have a legal standing to do that. So I don't know what those ordinances are doing for when I saw them, but...
Well, and I think that the issue of why we are enforcing this... I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we began to enforce this due to citizen complaints for the appearance and the signs on the state right-of-way. I wasn't here when that's...
When I talked to you, you indicated to me that it seemed to be the personal preference of a former mayor and a couple of former police chiefs. That that was a hot button for them, so they felt they wanted to do it. Now, was it a hot button because it was a personal hot button? Was it a hot button because they got tired of hearing complaints? I don't know.
I can't answer that entirely in what they were thinking. I know there were some citizen complaints that were discussed at board meetings. And as a result of actions that were taken by the former mayor and those aldermen who were concerned, asked the chief of police to contact MoDOT, is what I understand, to see about the enforcement. So, I don't know what the underlying factor might have been, but there were complaints from citizens, I think, who lived along 47.
Alderman Dryer?
I'm going to go along with John and carry on for six months.
Try and see what happens. You want to entertain a motion, something to that effect?
I'll make a motion not enforce MoDOT's regulation on signs in their right-of-way for a period of six months.
You want to add weekends to that only or...
Yes, let's go ahead and add weekends to that.
Well, before we... So, what if you have a business that isn't interested in the weekends, but they want something Monday through Thursday? You know, somebody wants to advertise that they have a lunch special at their restaurant.
But I think, but that's a business...
This is a business.
I think your issue is, or you forget about... MoDOT will enforce that themselves five days a week from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the morning.
Then that's what I'm saying. Then MoDOT do that.
All I'm saying is that the city of Warrenton will not enforce MoDOT's regulation on weekends.
So you want them to Monday through Friday?
They can.
But I don't think that they won't have to. MoDOT comes up and down as...
Then I don't think that it's necessary to limit it to the weekends. I would prefer that it be a...
Oh, blanket?
Yeah, an all or nothing.
Well, I'll amend my motion to all the time.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion on the floor from Alderman Clark to put a moratorium on the enforcing MoDOT sign regulations in the MoDOT right-of-way for six months?
Six months.
And seconded by Alderman Ock. Any further discussion from the board? I'll ask for a roll call. Vote please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Flack?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
No.
Alderman Flack?
No.
No.
Motion carried, 3 to 2 with one absent. We'll see what happens.
All right, thank you.
If it's a problem...
Let me know.
You know, if we get a lottery or...
That's all you can do is try.
That's all we can try.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your time. How about item number nine? Are there any amended agenda items?
No, sir.
And we're on to 10. Dottie Phillips, Recreation Director. Dottie, you're up.
Good evening. The first item that I have is the Cooperative Facilities Agreement with the Warren County School District. Very pleased to finally get this here. It has been approved by the school board for their staff to proceed. So with this agreement, it would allow us to use some gymnasium facilities to offer youth programs. I think this is a great starting point for us in building that cooperative use agreement that we've been working toward. And my recommendation would be that the board approve the agreement.
The school attorney and our attorney both have signed off on this form?
Yes, sir. Both attorneys have reviewed it.
Well, we need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
There's actually a form at the end for it, so...
Okay, how about item B?
Item B is the Pavilion Rental Policy that we brought forward last board meeting. There was one suggested change, and that was in Section 3, Letter D. It was asked that the dogs are permitted at city parks. And originally, the wording was "and maybe on a leash at all times" or "should be on a leash at all times." And we've changed it to "shall be on a leash at all times." And then we also, in reviewing it, found one other addition that we needed to make to it, which is Section 2, Letter O, which is enforcing the city's current code on fire regulations in the parks.
Do we need a motion to approve that amendment? Is there any discussion from the board on that policy? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the policy changes in the Pavilion rental and usage guidelines?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the Pavilion rental policy. What was the rest of your motion?
I thought it was it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? I ask for a roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0 with one absent. Anything else, Dottie?
No, sir.
Have you found us a new person to take the farmer's market over?
No, sir, I have not. But we do have a group that is interested. They just came today to talk to us. I haven't even had a chance to talk to Terry about it, so very...
Very possible, huh?
It's possible, but very beginning stage of the discussion. Lots of details that we need to work out.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on item 11. Director of Operations, Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
The only thing I have for you this evening is a reminder of the planning meeting next Tuesday. We'll start at 8:00 AM.
Okay. I think everybody's got that under schedule and looking forward to it.
What is the... I'm assuming we're going to work until we're done. Any thoughts on...
6:00 PM is the planned end time.
Can you make it that long?
I will see.
We're going to feed you throughout the day, so...
Somebody would take that as a...
I saw the breakfast menu, but I didn't see the supper menu.
I think it's fruit and nuts is what Melanie has planned.
Yeah, I saw it.
Let me know how she likes that.
No comment.
And Gina Cooper's the facilitator?
We're the facilitators. We're working on the final agenda. I've been working on it yesterday and today.
What about dress attire?
Whatever.
Casual?
Yes.
And it be at this chamber?
No, it will be in an Innsbruck conference room.
Oh. Could I have a time so I have...
8:00.
8:00 in Innsbruck.
Starting at 8:00 AM sharp. And there will be breakfast foods and whatever.
Is that it?
That's it.
We're going to the... To Jack, Building Officer and Building Commissioner.
First thing I have is the monthly building department report for you.
Any new home permits?
Not this last month, no, sir.
Not since last meeting?
Just kind of curious, do we have a policy on limb removal or debris from storms? You know, a lot of the cities in St. Louis promote trees, and we promote trees. You know, have policies where if there's a storm comes through and you have branches down, that you can drag them out on the sidewalk and the city will haul them off for you if they're reasonable size or maintainable. Do we do anything like that?
We have done it a couple of times when we've had big winter storms.
Okay.
We don't have a policy that says when we will, but certainly, there have been times that the board has said they think that that's public service that we need to provide. So, at any point, I'm assuming that we can make that decision and move that forward.
Okay, any other questions for Jack? We'll move on to item B.
The proposed amendment to Section 405.255, accessory buildings and structures. Basically, we said during the public hearing, it is... Proposed amendment is to delete the sentence that states, except in HAG, no accessory building or structure shall be larger than total area than 40% of the total building area or structural on the lot. And then also, the P&amp;Z Commission asked to add a definition for building area, which would be the total exterior dimension of the building at ground level. And that would be presented in January, amendment for the definitions.
And the reason behind changing that was because some houses were so small?
There's a lot of houses within the city limits that are small enough where even though they have plenty of ground, they can build a two-car garage or like a 20 by 30 garage. And in the past year, we've had to turn down a few permitted applications for that. More recently, you know, we had two more right-of-way back-to-back where it was just because of that 40% statement that we canceled them out. The code still says it cannot be more than 30% of the rear yard area. So there's still a safety net that the whole backyard don't become a building.
I think that's a good fix. I think that will work very well. Any questions for Mr. Hamp on item B?
Is there any comments at the zoning meeting? It didn't look like it.
The only comments from the P&amp;Z Commission was to make sure that we added the definition for building area.
But for the public, it was just this gentleman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, he was there and spoke in favor of it, I would say.
But over the past year, we've had some other issues.
We've had a few permits and applications that we haven't been able to process.
And this might enable those people to come back and...
Yes, sir.
Reapply for accessory building.
Jack, is it possible... Do you have record of those that have been turned down? Could we proactively contact those people and advise them?
Some I will, some if they just called and asked over the phone.
Right.
It might be a little harder to backtrack.
I would appreciate if you could let them know that there has been a change if they're still considering that project.
Okay, no problem.
About item C, 12C.
That's a proposed amendment to Appendix A. Commercial sections regarding bakeries. Item 4, bakery, commercial or wholesale bakery with limited walk-in, retail trade. Item 5, bakery, retail trade. And Item 16, food service, walk-in, walk-up restaurants, walk-in restaurants with drive-in and or drive-through. And the recommendation was to change that to conditional use for the RC-1 and RC-2 zoning districts.
Can we go back to the item before this? We need a motion to have the attorney draw the change in the ordinance because there is not... At the end of the meeting, there is no bill, so it hasn't been drafted. So I think the board has to approve the... If the board approves or denies the request.
We've done it in the past.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the request to change our... What do you want to call it though? Building size for lots? Proposed amendment, change of accessory building and structure.
That it? That it or second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock. To have the... You're asking for the city attorney to draw up an ordinance to approve the amendments to Section 405.255, accessory building and structures, ADM 61. Is that correct?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
5-0 with one absent. What do we... On the amendments to the grid, do we need any motions on that?
Well, we need to talk about it.
Want to talk about it a little farther?
Yeah. I guess I was... I didn't realize, and of course, this happened when it was off, that I'm trying to get to the part of the grid that's red, that permitted use for bakery, retail was in the RC-1 zone. So could you refresh me exactly? On the north side, the RC-1 zone stops at barbecue place? Or is that part of the zone? Is the barbecue place part of the zone?
I don't believe he is. I think it's just his south line.
Okay. And then the red zone switches at 47 or at Main? And then it becomes RC-2 and it goes all the way down through the end of town?
It goes down to right before the county building, I believe, in Casey's.
Okay. I was surprised when I read this. I didn't realize at some point in time that bakeries were allowed use in the RC-1 zone. And now, we're talking about bakery, commercial, and restaurants in the RC-1 zone.
With a conditional use for that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I didn't... I mean, you know, the whole idea of the RC-1 zone on Highway 47 was to maintain the character of the town as it was. And so, the theory was that we're going to allow... We can't deny development, but we want to have the development in a manner that had a minimal impact on the surrounding properties because we want to try to preserve the old neighborhoods on either side. And so, the concern was with having places where you could get litter, you could get smells, you know, what's behind a restaurant, you know, where they dumped their grease, and all those issues, that it would have an impact on the neighborhood. And what we tried to do is allow some development on Cherry, but only for parking. And the reason was that we felt like initially the development might have been stifled because we were too restrictive. And the reality is no one's ever going to build a building across the alley between 47 and Cherry because there's so many utilities in the alley, I don't even know if you could do it or it would be a huge expense. So my... So I, my, my initial concern about this is, are we really changing the character of Warrenton? The idea is you come in town and you've got what everybody refers to as gasoline alley, you've got all that retail business. And then as you start allowing this stuff to creep farther in, does this now become like Highway K or one of those places? Is that what we want for the community? And this goes back a number of years because I remember one time there was this huge discussion about, you know, when you come to town, you see these larger buildings, you know, older homes, that's part of what sets Warrenton apart from other communities. So that's just my thoughts.
I was present during the P and Z, uh, meeting and a lot of the discussions surrounded whether or not to make this an allowed use or keep it as a conditional use. And very much they wanted to keep it as a conditional use. The gentleman who was interested in developing the bakery is here tonight. He was there that night. And one of the comments he made was it's his intention to use either the existing structure or if that's not possible, to rebuild the structure that would maintain a residential appearance somewhere. So I think that, uh, the P and Z board very much discussed that, that desire to keep that appearance. And the other thing that I thought was discussed was that this would not change what was allowed on Cherry.
Yeah, that's true. There's a specific list of, uh, items that are allowed. Permitted uses for businesses that front on Cherry shall be restricted to the following. Detached, single-family residence, non-retail, commercial, and business office, professional offices, institutional offices, government offices, medical offices, financial institutions, including but not limited to banks, savings, and loans and credit unions, and any use which in the judgment of the planning zoning commission is identical or similar to one or more of the above listed uses which conform to the intent and purpose of this section.
So when you say fronting on Cherry, you mean that the building will face the resident across the street?
Fronting, where the front of the, front of the, the business would face Cherry Street.
The properties that front on Cherry Street?
Yes, sir.
Are limited to that.
When was that changed, just out of curiosity?
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six.
How was our planning and zoning, will we change that? But I can't tell you how many years ago this was.
I must have been disconnected because I would have been down here arguing on that one.
Uh, it looks like.
Section, Jack?
Uh, four oh five point one one zero.
So, so while we're looking, it looks like two thousand and six. Because I thought one of the commitments, when we did the initial change to move Cherry to commercial, was a commitment to the property owners on the east side of Cherry that they would not be facing a business ever. But clearly that was changed and all the discussion about buffers and parking only and all that is no longer a part of it.
That's true.
Wow.
So everything on the east, on the west side of Cherry is part of that district, yeah? And, and so what we're saying is those houses, let's, let's say they want to convert one of those houses to an insurance office, just for example.
Right.
They certainly would have that opportunity to do that. I, I have a quick question for Jack on, have you notified adjacent property owners yet on, on the request to make this a conditional use type thing?
Uh, on the amendments, you did not notify.
They what?
Um, for an amendment, you did not notify property owners. You have the public hearing in the paper.
Okay.
And the public hearing's posted up front here.
And then there would be notification at the point that somebody applies for a condition?
If someone applies for the condition of use, that's when the property owner sort of gets notified.
Okay.
So if somebody wasn't looking for this, they'd never see it? The change to the amendment to the ordinances? Right? So now we're changing this ordinance. And somebody, I guess, if they had been lucky enough to see the article in the paper, the notice, then they would have come down here and been able to comment, but...
Well, that's the, that's the way all amendments are, not just this particular one.
Well, you know, to me, I think the city owes greater due diligence to the taxpayer to give them greater notice and that's something to talk about later, you know? Other communities do all sorts of things, post signs, you know, go mail stuff and all that. Because, I mean, I know a number of people on Cherry Lane, maybe they have all moved off now since the zoning changes. I think a bunch of them didn't vote for me last time I ran, but, you know, were quite upset because of the changes on Cherry. And I think they would be even more upset with what's there, but I guess that's after the fact.
It looks like there were two changes in this section, one in two thousand and four and one in two thousand and five. But I can't tell from what I've got here which section of it was changed at that point.
We need a vote on this, Melody?
Yes.
And what, in the, uh, planning zoning voted seven to zero?
Yes, sir.
On that? Yeah, we, yeah, I do need a motion on it.
Motion to approve or motion for...
The amendment to the zoning code.
Yeah, to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the zoning grid?
Amendment.
Appendix A zoning grid? The changes?
Make a motion to approve the amendment to appendix A, ADM dash sixty.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dyer to approve the amendment to appendix A zoning grid ADM sixty-two. Any, any more discussion on it?
Mayor, I believe that this also has to go to ordinance, correct, Melody?
Yes, it will be at the next meeting.
Okay. If this is approved, then we have to draft an ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Hock.
No.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Motion carried four to one with one Epsilon. What else, Jack?
That's it, sir.
I'm ready for Brad.
Good evening. I have my monthly report for October through, October seventh through November the third.
Any questions for the grounds of maintenance?
Uh, next item I have is the, uh, bid for the snow thrower. I would, uh, like to recommend we go with the, uh, snow thrower from Dire Rents for the amount of one thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. We had twenty-two hundred dollars budgeted for this, uh, item.
Does that, uh, snow thrower have chains on it? Or do you need chains?
No, I would, that was, I don't know how that goes. I was just looking at it. They were, they quoted me those, but we, with, everybody says you don't really need them.
You don't really need them?
No.
And, and this would be for sidewalk removal?
All the sidewalks out here, front, back, in between the thing, around the back, that we can't get to with the, uh, with the, uh,
With the bigger equipment?
Right.
City, city property. Correct. On city property, sidewalks on city property.
Yeah, around this whole, all of our sidewalks around here.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of snow thrower from Dire Rents in the amount of thirteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Be low bid.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the, did you say low bid?
Low bid.
Low bid on the snow thrower bid from Dire Rents in the amount of one thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Hock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one Epsilon. Anything else?
Historical Society is still waiting for your, uh, memories for the program for Christmas, if y'all haven't.
I haven't. Now I'll try and remember.
Brought him in yet? Do you need to, if we can get him over there or get him to, I think they're going to Melody, I believe is who they're supposed to go to, so. Should get him over there.
Was that a, a childhood toy or?
Memory, right, yeah, something about a gift that you received or whatever. If you happen to still have it.
Good.
That's all I have.
They didn't even have Christmas when I was a kid.
Chief, ready for you?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, first thing I have this evening is the police department report for October. Nothing terribly remarkable there. The one thing that I will comment about, though, is, uh, we have seen a little bit of a spike in the ride-along program. And I think I attribute that to Mr. Earl's ride-along and, um, the very nice article that was in the paper right after that. So I appreciate that, Chris.
Good.
Hopefully that will continue. Any questions about the monthly report?
Chief, the, uh, in the calls for service, the dangerous drugs it lists four, but then there are, I think, eleven under drug-related incidents.
Yeah, and I think that goes back to the way that those get coded at dispatch.
Okay.
They don't necessarily get recoded as dangerous drugs when they come back over. It goes back to the original type of call. We actually, the clerks are going through all the calls to find anything that has to do with drugs. So, you know, for example, one of these was a follow-up.
Right.
So it wasn't originally, um, coded as a, as a dangerous drug call.
I see. But then in that, there, up above, there are four that are titled dangerous drugs, but then down here in the drug related, I see where some of them are assist citizen or follow-up.
Right.
But there are only three that are dangerous drugs in there.
Yeah, I'm not too sure where the disconnect is on that. I, I can try to figure that out, but...
Okay.
You know, the other thing I'm going to say about these drug calls is since our, um, exposure to the task force, um, our guys are definitely a lot more interested in cultivating information. We've really started a program to try to get them to look beyond, uh, the tickets and, and be more productive with their traffic stops. So we hope to see these numbers of arrests and these types of arrests to go up in the near future.
I do, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the chief?
Okay. The other thing, pretty excited about this, Officer Unger, who is the school resource officer at Blackhawk, made contact with the St. Louis Cardinals organization and, uh, they have agreed to come out and do their Cardinals Doing It Right program. It's going to be held on December second at Blackhawk Middle School. Uh, this program is basically a program for middle school age kids to, uh, help them to make better decisions. So I'm pretty excited about it. I know Officer Unger's very excited about it. He wanted me to extend invitations to the mayor and all of the board. If you have the ability to come to one or both of those presentations, you're more than welcome and, uh, we would certainly like to see you there.
Sounds like a fun deal.
Indeed.
Go ahead.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Grebers?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. You got my monthly report in front of you? Any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at our annual water usage. And you, you notice in two thousand and seven, we were two hundred and ninety-one million, nine hundred and forty-five gallons. Why would we use less water as, over the years?
For the total?
Yeah, for, for the annual total there. Would you think our water usage would go up every year?
That I do not know.
One of those unanswerable questions.
Well, we were always told in the past that there's a certain amount of water loss. I don't know. And maybe we've done a better, you know, through maybe, I don't know, with seepage or pipe conditions or what?
Right.
In the past, and then as we've maintained and improved lines, that loss becomes less. I don't know if that makes sense, but that was always the explanation.
And we, we watched, we looked for water losses and that, and like when we fill a flusher truck up, we account for filling the truck up. So we keep a pretty close, tight look at that because all that needs to be reported to DNR.
I, I was just curious, you know, I, you know, in two thousand and ten, we only used two hundred and sixty-two million. So I, I was trying to figure out, why would we have a less? Maybe you're right, Alderman. Uh, I'm buying into it, so.
Well, I get some swap property on a site, if that's the case.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on that topic? I think we're good.
Okay.
About Meadowview Drive project?
That's two projects, Meadowview. Meadowview Drive project, I need approval to proceed with that. Has to repair some concrete.
I can never remember. We just need a motion to go ahead with the project at an estimated cost of five thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. Is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Meadowview Drive project in the amount of five thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. Any further discussion? Where, where is Meadowview Drive? I'm trying to think.
Past the shadows, you're going up towards the hill, past nine one one.
Okay, so it works out. Got you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dyer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried five zero, one Epsilon.
Next one would be Meadowview Court?
Guys, while we're talking about, those roads aren't that old. Why are we having to replace?
Everywhere where this, the concrete we put together, it's all busted up and deteriorated. We went up, we've had quite a few complaints. And we went up to, uh, put some cold mix in there, some, to fill it in, but it's the first, first time we go through with the snowplow. It's going to be an issue. I mean, it broke up on both sides.
Was it?
I have no idea why I did it. We're going to saw cut a section out where the seam is and redo the seams. But it's everywhere there's a seam.
Oh.
Is there a base under it?
It, it ain't breaking up that way. It looks like the top layer of the concrete broke and then it falls down in the seam. It's got some, it has some big potholes in it.
Yeah, I, I will attest to the poor conditions of it. I just was curious if you had any idea why. I make a motion to approve the forty-one hundred dollar estimate for removal or replace concrete on Meadowview Court. Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Meadowview Court project in the amount of four thousand seven seven dollars. Is that right, Alderman Cornell?
I've already gone on to the next one. May I help you with that?
I think you gave a different.
Forty-nine.
Yeah.
Four thousand seventy-seven dollars.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one F. Snowplow.
Next item is a, uh, snowplow, replace one on truck three. And Midwest Systems trucks incorporated would came in at low bid.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Public Works Director for the purchase of a snowplow in the amount of four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars of Midwest Systems truck.
Second. Motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Public Works Director's, uh, bid from, on a snowplow for Midwest Systems truck equipment in the amount of four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception.
Next item I have is the soft start unit for well six.
Can you tell me what a soft start?
Instead of, instead of the motor of a pump starting a quick jerk, the soft start will ramp the motor up slowly, and it'll also ramp it down slowly. So that's easier on your piping, your chlorine feeds, piping, and it gets longer life out of the motor.
How much does a motor cost, just out of curiosity? If you're replacing...
We just, hundred and, between a hundred and something, seventy-eight thousand dollars in that ballpark. Because you got to drop it and pull it out and...
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of the soft start for well number six from the pump company in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the Public Works Director's request for soft start for well bid number six from the pump shop in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Are we, were we under contract to Roger Owen? I thought...
He came in, Mr. Irby came in on hire on the part.
He'll do the installation on this?
No, because he estimated the installation to be eight hundred and something to be ready for sale, so I went ahead and went with the other company, because he was estimating what it cost, and then...
Gotcha.
Where are we at on this? Roll call?
Yes. Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception. Snow plow.
Next item is the snow plow, replaced one on truck three. And Midwest Systems Trucks Incorporated came in at low bid.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Public Works Director for the purchase of the snow plow in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars of Midwest Systems Truck.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Public Works Director's bid from, on a snow plow for a Midwest Systems Truck Equipment in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception. Snow plow.
Next item is the snow plow, replaced one on truck three. And Midwest Systems Trucks Incorporated came in at low bid.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Public Works Director for the purchase of the snow plow in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars of Midwest Systems Truck.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Public Works Director's request for soft start for well bid number six from the pump shop in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the Public Works Director's request for soft start for well bid number six from the pump shop in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Are we, were we under contract to Roger Owen? I thought...
He came in, Mr. Irby came in on hire on the part.
He'll do the installation on this?
No, because he estimated the installation to be eight hundred and something to be ready for sale, so I went ahead and went with the other company, because he was estimating what it cost, and then...
Gotcha.
Where are we at on this? Roll call?
Yes. Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception. Gonzalez Engineering?
I'd like to ask for approval for a change order for the wastewater treatment plant and collection system of seventy-two thousand dollars.
Explain to me what we're doing here. Is it a change order in the dollar amount, or is change order in the extension?
To add to the original, what this is, what this is doing is, for a five-year program, we're addressing our issue that we have at the wastewater plant and the collection system. One of the issues we got is the East Intercept, Water Street Lift Station, the West Interception, and then the wastewater plant. So that'll give us, and then also the rerating of the wastewater plant. For us being able to rerate the wastewater plant, that's going to save us some money on adding on to the plant. We'll go with, they'll go with, through DNR to have the plant rerated, so we can take more organic and more flow.
I guess I still don't know what I'm voting on.
Let me give you the layman's version.
That's what we're interested in.
As I understand this, the potential is there that we can increase the capacity daily at our plant by a million gallons, so going from two MGD to three MGD. Simply because the quality of the effluent is lower than what's required lets us have more capacity.
Right.
So the seventy-two thousand dollar increase allows the engineers to do the engineering study that DNR requires to come with that application, and the completion of the application to be submitted for the potential without any changes in the way that our structure currently is to gain a million gallons a day capacity. The addition of one more orbital out there is about five million dollars. So if we can get this accomplished with less than a hundred thousand dollar outlay just by rerating our system, it'll be a very positive thing for the city. They've already had discussions, and if any of this is wrong, tell me. They've already had discussions with DNR to make sure that this falls within the guidelines of what they believe that they will allow. They just did something like this in O'Fallon?
St. Peters.
St. Peters. So it does have the ability to have a significant impact without having to build another structure out there.
So, I mean, what we're basically doing is rolling the dice by spending seventy-two thousand on the proposal that would have a huge impact on the city, because if you get that much more, it's what you can process, it allows you more expansion in the city, allows you more growth, allows everything, and we feel pretty comfortable that will be approved, so it's more of an educated gamble, as opposed to just, oh, we saw this in the paper, and we're going to go after it.
Yes, they've already had, the engineers have already had discussions with DNR to make sure that this is something that falls within the parameters of being able to gain approval. Now, there is the potential that there could be up to another ten thousand dollars. This is just to create the engineering report and complete the paperwork for submission. Once it goes to DNR, DNR could say, we want you to look at this, this, and this, we want another report that contains something else. So if that happens, that would be under our general services contract, and we'd come to you for approval before we did it. But Guy and I felt like we needed to tell you upfront, there is the potential for some additional expense estimated to be not more than ten thousand. It's kind of an unknown what else DNR will ask for.
Right. But basically, this doesn't extend the life of the plant, it just allows you to use the current plant to service more.
Right. The initial projections that the engineers had done said that three million gallons a day would run us up to another ten years, unless something really significant happens. So it would gain a lot of life expectancy without a major improvement to our capacity out there.
When you talk about St. Peters, was Gonzalez involved in that?
No, but they are working with the engineers who got that accomplished. We had a conference call with him this morning, and they've already been in contact with them.
Is this going to eliminate the need to update our lift stations and put in truck